I apologize for the delay. We're going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District to order at 1:07 PM. We're having some camera difficulties. We do have audio that is live, and the camera will reboot, and we will have camera shortly. We are meeting in person in the I C C boardroom, but we do have participants via video and teleconference due to the COVID protocols that are still in place. The public has been advised of where to listen to an audio, and again, as soon as we get the cameras back up, we'll be able to view the meeting as well on our webcast. I'm going to do a roll call to establish quorum. Regent Adami?
Here.
Regent Abrit?
Here.
Regent Bennett?
Here.
Regent Garza?
Here.
Regent Hutchison?
Here.
Regent Kelly?
Here.
Regent Turner?
Here.
I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. We're going to dispense with the rest of our opening ceremonies to give us some additional time. We, again, are streaming the college, the meeting on our college's website. We do have an individual who has requested public comment, and so at this time, we are going, can we go to that public comment? If you could identify yourself, caller, please.
Yes, this is John Wilson.
Thank you, sir. You may go ahead.
Okay, and I'm speaking to consent agenda item number nine, the AGCM contract. Let me begin by asking a question of the board. Are y'all aware that construction management contracts are generally priced and awarded based on a sliding scale? The higher the dollar amount of a project, the lower the contract as a percentage of the project is typical in private industry as well as in public projects. The current $109 million contract is paying AGCM over 4% of the contract amount. Projects of that size typically pay the construction management company no more than 1.5%. AGCM is being paid millions of dollars more than this project is typically called for. The question is raised, why would the Board of Regents pay, or agree to pay AGCM, an additional $600,000 more due to their inability to accurately budget their costs? At this point, or at this time, rather, I am respectfully requesting the Board of Regents request that contract modification that AGCM is asking for. Thank you.
No other individuals who registered for public comment, so at this point in time, we will proceed with our recognitions, and we will start with Ms. Patricia Benavides-Dominguez, who is going to help us recognize one of her staff members.
Thank you. Madam Chair, esteemed Regents, Dr. Eskimia?
Gracie, come up here.
It is my pleasure to recognize Gracie Martinez, Dean of Outreach and Enrollment Services. She was recently chosen to serve on the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee. Beginning March 2021, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board approved significant revisions to transfer rules and amended the Texas Administrative Code. The Texas Transfer Advisory Committee is charged with overseeing the new transfer policy framework and will advise the Commissioner and Board of, and Board on various transfer rules. Two areas that Ms. Martinez will be working with a group of committee members is the oversight of the field of study, recommendations for core curriculum courses and transfer pathways, reviewing and making recommendations to optimize the transferability of credits and increase student transfer success, recommendations regarding the timing and structure of transfer policy-related agency surveys and data collection. The transfer, the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee is comprised of 24 members, and it is a three-year term through your commitment on Ms. Martinez's part. We look forward to the important work and are fortunate to have her at the table with other community college colleagues.
Thank you. Congratulations. Ms. Martinez, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Just a few words. It is really my honor to have been selected to serve on this committee. I'm very excited and very committed to Delmar College and our students, really, because we want to ensure that they transfer from a community college, whether it's Delmar or other, any other college, to a public four-year university seamlessly. So that is our goal, and so I'm very excited, and I really want to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve on this committee. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for your willingness to take on the extra role. It is, we know, going to be a time commitment and certainly something that I know Dr. Eskimia and his entire executive team support. When we have the opportunity to influence these kinds of decisions, it's very important. So thank you for representing Delmar College. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Ms. Tammy McDonald.
Good afternoon. It is my pleasure and honor to recognize Dean Nevada Jr., our general counsel. He has recently been elected to the Directors for the National Association of College and University, a term of college and universities, and is considered a primary source of information on legal developments facing colleges and universities. And we're especially proud because Mr. Rivera is the only representative from a community college that is serving on this board. So we want to thank him and congratulate him.
It was a blind nomination. I didn't seek the office. I got nominated, and I got elected. It's a national board. There were 4,000 members. They're major universities, private, and there are some community colleges and some very private, like Delmar College.
Staff and our Regents falls under goal number five with our strategic plan, which we talked about earlier today. We have worked collectively with the Texas Association of Community Colleges, the Community College Association of Texas Trustees, and the Texas Community College Teachers Association. Our advocacy has included starting and working on a state agenda, which began in December of 2019. As Dr. Eskimia mentioned, it included weekly meetings to review and change the strategy as needed over the six months of the session. There were specialized group meetings with key leaders at the Capitol, and also Dr. Eskimia, Regent Scott, and myself have provided consistent communication with our state leaders as we've been throughout this process. So this, this session, there were approximately about 500 bills that affect our students, our faculty, our staff, and our trustees. So with the help of TAC and our colleagues around the state, we really focus on making sure that we're keeping track of every bill that could possibly affect us along the way. So today, I'd like to update you on the three main bills that we focused on in the agenda that we advocated for. So to begin with was Senate Bill One, which was the budget. Now, the last time that I spoke to you, the, the House budget and the Senate budget came in differently. The appropriations were different for community colleges. So that's when it was sent to conference committee. So that's the last time we spoke. Since then, the conference committee did meet and did look at our appropriations and come to a conclusion to send to the governor. Now, you do have in your packet the funding ask that we started with. It has the TAC appropriations request that was advocated for, and then the Senate and the House adopted versions that we went over a couple of months ago. What the conference committee ended up doing was going with the Senate adopted version. Now, if you look at, if you look at the details of that version, there is $0 to hold harmless, and there was also a significant change in the way that colleges receive money based on the success points versus the contact hours. So what does that mean for us day to day when it comes to receiving our appropriations? What that really looks like in terms of our day to day is that our success points are really going to come in the next biennium for our transfers going to the four-year university, and not as much weight is going to be put on our continuing education. Now, you might wonder, we've been talking this whole morning about the importance of CTE and the academic side, both working together, and right now, the state is really choosing to focus on our four-year university for success points. The less on CTE right now, that does put into question how that helps us to attain our 60 by 30 Texas goals. As Dr. Eskimia mentioned earlier, there is work with the Higher Education Coordinating Board to revise those goals. So stay tuned because that is part of our advocacy work, is continuing to help our legislators remember that there really is a complexity to how we serve our students and the importance of counting every, you know, every piece of work that we do.
It's the, they're the workforce. They could be credit or non-credit. They slightly reduced the workforce contact hours versus the transfer. Whether it's CE or credit, it could be welding CE, right? Welding can live in both worlds. It's, it's the whole workforce umbrella versus the transfer, not just CE. So I just want to add that clarity.
So overall, when it came to our funding, they gave us the same appropriations as the last biennium, just the money was going into different buckets, again, with, with priority on the success points. So there was a new development towards the end of the appropriations request. One of our House of Representatives added $11 million to 11 colleges. That was called the Rainy Rider. They got attached at the end, and that was able to be passed. So we had, I believe, five or six of the colleges that were able to get out of, out of the red because of that appropriation. However, six. However, the other five were still in the red. So overall, we have 24 colleges, our colleagues who are going to be in the red for the next biennium. What we did learn yesterday is after conference committee, as the budget is being sent to the governor's desk, the four-year universities did receive an extra $380 million, and that was after conference committee. So the question is asked, how did that happen, and how did community colleges? How were we left out of that? And I think in talking with Dr. Eskimia, that continues to be our biggest challenge, is that we continue to advocate and talk about how important our students are to the economy of Texas and our livelihood as citizens, and yet, at the end of the day, this continues to be a challenge year after year. This is part of our strategy for regrouping again outside of session and trying to figure out what the new. Does anybody have any questions on that? The second bill that came up was the Texas Community College Commission. I'm happy to say that that bill has passed and has been signed by the governor. That was signed on the, on, on May 26th. Now, this commission is going to be set up to really provide recommendations for the next session. It has a very robust agenda. The initial bill, which was put together by Senator Taylor, really wanted to focus on the finance of community colleges. As mentioned before, I don't, I believe it's the '70s was the last time that our finance structure had really been looked at by the state as a whole. However, when the bill was discussed with the governor, the governor's office felt that it needed to have, the commission needed to have a more robust agenda attached to it. So the commission did pass. It does begin September 1st, but it's not only going to focus on finance, it's going to focus on looking at overall workforce, dual credit, taxing districts, college enrollment, and other issues that are affecting the community colleges. So what TAC, CAT, and TCCA did was they went ahead and formed an internal working committee, and Regent Scott is part of that committee so that they can start looking at data, so that they can make recommendations to this commission. Regent Scott, did you want to talk about that at all?
It, it, the committee, the internal working group, has about 25 or 30 members from individual colleges, and so that we tried to have both Regents, CEOs, and then some faculty, some folks representing the Teachers Association not come from any, more than one from any one college. So we've got a good diversity of sizes of college. We've got a good diversity of regions of the state represented, and also different funding models. Some community colleges in Texas, their taxing district and their service area equal the same thing. Some have huge service areas, multi-county, and only a much smaller taxing district. Some rely quite heavily on tuition and state funding and very little on property tax. Some do the opposite. They rely quite heavily on property tax and state funding, but keep their tuition extraordinarily low. So there's different funding models represented on this internal working group as well, so that we can hopefully work in advance of the commission and be doing research, doing impact analysis, really understanding what the, is on the commission's agenda two or three months out, and be making sure that we've got adequate information provided through our commission members that the commission will be considering, so.
Thank you. This is really exciting for community colleges. We haven't had anything like this before. The last session, K through 12, did, did start a commission as well and helped with their appropriations for recommendations. So this group, again, will be 12 individuals appointed by the, four appointed by the governor, three by the lieutenant governor, three by the Speaker of the House, and then there will be one appointee from TAC and then one from CAT as well. So again, the internal working group has already started, and they've got a lot of work ahead of them. The first report for the commission is going to be due on November 1st. So that's going to be started pretty quickly here. The last major bill that I wanted to talk to you about was the True Initiative. So that, that bill, we had talked about before, was the $50 million initiative that allows for our community colleges to provide quick and, and quick, and current industry certifications and needs to our, to our employers. So getting our students trained quickly for the jobs that are out there right now. So that one also has passed. It is, though, sitting on the governor's desk. The governor has about five more days. We don't anticipate that the governor will not sign it, but there's no ink on it yet. So stay tuned on that one as well. But we are really excited. I had mentioned to you before that Delmar College is part of a work group that the Texas Student Success Center had put together. Dr. Nevada and Dr. Wilson are working on that as well, and I was told this week that Delmar College is actually the model institution, that the Success Center is actually talking to other national partners about how well we are doing and what our structure already looks like. So.
Could this be why in the general appropriations bill, they're emphasizing success points as opposed to contact hours?
This actually, this bill's a little different in that they have decided that the $50 million is going to come from federal money.
Yeah. It's a contradiction, seemingly, when you're going to lower the value of workforce, credit, non-credit, contact, success points, success points, under success points. And so, to give you perspective, success points are 10% of the overall appropriations. So just to kind of give a perspective. But then, yeah, this one says, go workforce. The other one says, whoa, workforce. So, you know, I've kind of got that, that feeling. We're all kind of sitting there scratching it. What it is, is just different camps, different camps, taking, taking initiatives forward and really giving values that are contradictory, in our opinion. I mean, and that's what you're reacting to.
Is this the type of thing that the commission might be addressing?
Not the True Initiative directly, but, but the success points, contact hours, the state funding formula is the primary focus. But then what impacts that, things like population growth, taxing growth, but it's primarily focused on the state portion of community college funding.
Do you know, have a taxing district different than their service area?
The majority of them are. The majority of them are. Very, very few, I think. Do you have that number up top here?
I don't.
Seven, eight, less than 10? Probably have the taxing district that is their service area. I used to work at Tarrant County. That was one. So it's very few, and it's very disparate, very disparate in terms of representation, the sizes and the configurations and the like. One other thing, too, community colleges are the only ones that, are the only institutions of our area that participate in success points and performance-based funding at any rate. Universities are not in that game, if you will. Just FYI. I don't, I can find that information for you, because that's.
We can get that information. Interesting question. So, again, we're hoping that the governor will sign that in the next few days. However, they have said that that money will be appropriated from the federal money that is going to be coming, so. There were a lot of other bills that were coming our way. There were a lot of bills filed this session. Even the governor had asked that only a few come in per legislature, legislator. There were many that were filed, however, there were not really a whole lot that were truly looked at and passed this session. And so I'd like to thank our faculty and staff because there were so many different bills that would come our way, from changing the hours for a cosmetology instructor, their license or coming to teach, or changing the hours in core for our history classes and how they are coded. There were so many different types of bills that continue, that come every session, and I was really able to contact our faculty, and they were, you know, more than willing to help and give me, you know, what they felt was good or bad about the bill, and because of our relationships at the Capitol, we were able to pass that information on, which was really, really important. So thank you to everybody. As Dr. Eskimia mentioned, there, we are going into special session. There will actually be two this year. One will focus on the voting bill that was not able to be voted on the last day before session ended, and then also there will be a second session that will focus on two items, which will be redistricting, which Representative Hunter is, is the chair of, and then also the federal money. There's $16 billion that the state will have to allocate out in federal money, so they will be focusing on that in special session as well. So you received an invitation from Dr. Manny Gonzalez a few days ago via email, and I'll resend that to you this afternoon as a reminder. He is holding a recap for all of our State Board of Trustees on the legislative session. It is June 17th from 11:00 AM to noon, and you can click on that link and register yourself. It's free of charge as members of CAT. So if you have the opportunity, I think it'd be a nice recap for you to hear, kind of a, a full comprehensive recap of the session from, from a trustee's perspective as well. So with special session coming, we, we will continue our work. What I've learned in this role is that the majority of our work also comes when session is not in place. And so for the next year and a half, we will continue meeting with our legislators, meeting with their staff, talking to them about how the college is doing and any, you know, challenges that we have, and also letting them know all the good things that are happening at the college. It really helps them to understand where our students are at, so that as session starts to gear up again, they're ready to help us. And again, we are going to really look at our strategy at a state level, because I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And this session was very different for our Regents. You know, usually our Regents are up at the Capitol with us. We were very lucky that Regent Scott was able to go and, and advocate on our behalf at the state level. Dr. Eskimia and I were able to go for a few days as well. You know, this session started with nobody at the Capitol at all. The halls were completely empty. Everybody was virtual. Two months later, we went. There was white tents outside with military helping us take our COVID swabs and wearing our masks. Until last Monday, when I went, the Capitol was completely open. There was visitors. There was kids running up and down the hall, and they were in full session. And so it went from being the session that would start to now the session that won't end. And so if you, if you see our legislators and their staff out there, be sure to thank them. They have worked tires tirelessly, and again, we will continue to stay in contact with them as well. And so next session, we will be looking for you to, to help us advocate in any way that you can. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Villarreal. If I could remind Regents to please turn on your microphone and see that little green light. When green is on, you can talk, and the rest of the world can hear you. We'll now move on to our preliminary budget update as part of our ongoing discussions on, on our budget process, and Mr. Garcia is going to give us the next chapter.
So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. President. We are now starting the second primer to the budget plan. The college has new and better external information, allowing for a more well-informed budget decisions and more content delivery in today's presentation. The, this includes the recent notification of our biennial state appropriations and trending inflation relative to our new economy. The last open big-ticket item is our tax revenue, which will be firmed up at our next workshop scheduled for July 27th. So let's get started, and beginning with the budget calendar. I'm going to skip this one and move on to the second one. Okay? So we're going to be starting with June, the month of June. As previously, as previously mentioned, the college is waiting on one more external critical data point to complete the property tax revenue portion of the budget. The revenue stream, this revenue stream represents over half of the college's operating budget. In accordance with the tax code, the Office of the County Appraisal will complete and report the final property tax values to the college by July 25th, a couple of days before our workshop. So that's the highlight on that slide. Moving on to the next one. So August will be a busy month whereby the college will need the board's help with the approval of the budget plan and the tax rate process. On August 10th, the college will request the board for an approval of two action items, allowing the college to conduct a public hearing for the budget and another hearing for the property tax rate. On August 24th, there will be a public hearing for comments and on property tax rate and the budget. Following the hearing, the college will present several action items, including the approval of the budget tax rates and property tax exemptions. Any questions on the calendar?
Can I have the budget meeting? Is there one at the evening, right?
Okay, so I don't have that information ready or available. I'm sorry about my microphone. No, that's a good question.
There's not going to be evening one for community members to attend at work? Is there one at 5? No?
No, no. There is, the budget hearing, I think, is at 11:30 on the 24th. So there's public comment at our regular board meeting on the 27th, on August the 10th, and then the formal bud, formal, formal public hearing is on the 24th, I believe, at 11 or 11:30, 11:00 AM. And we hold back-to-back public hearings on the budget and the tax rate, and then at 12:00 noon, we convene to then adopt the budget and the tax rate. And so as, as has been our practice, folks can either come in person or, well, by then, they might be able to come in person or, or register those, those comments.
It's also important to understand the current monetary policy framework. According to Federal Reserve Chair Powell, the framework is maximum employment with steady prices with a long-run inflation expectation anchored at 2%. According to the April inflation rate of 4.2%, inflation is acceptable, provided that the long end of the curve results in a 2% average. What is not known is the maximum acceptable level of inflation to achieve maximum employee, big question mark. So, this new inflationary information is weighing heavily on the minds of the college, including the effect it will have on our employees, who are our most valuable resource. Since March of 2020, our employees have courageously faced the hardship of the pandemic that includes transitioning to a digital-focused delivery platform of instruction and student services, loss of family members, emotional stress, mental illness, or added responsibilities for caring for a family member. Our employees are now navigating through what experts call transitionary inflation, which consumer costs, such as energy, food, and used cars, costs are going up in, in, in price. Further update on, on trending inflationary rates will be provided in, in the July workshop. The inflationary report is going to be coming out on Thursday, so I'll, I'll report a little bit more on that later on. So if there are no questions, Ms. Tammy McDonald will lead us into the discussion of employee compensation. So if there are no questions, Ms. Tammy McDonald will lead us into the discussion of employee compensation.
Thank you. Because I'm the driver now, huh? Or just this one? All right, there you go. Just to keep hitting up the mouse. Thank you. At our our last budget update, we were asked to bring a recommendation. So this slide is our proposed salary increase recommendation that administration is making to the board. We'll start with our full-time faculty. We are proposing an increase to the common base of $1,240. That will be a salary change overall of $397,000. Of course, anytime there's an increase in wage, you have to also put in the associated benefits or cost of benefits, social security tax, all of that. So that would be a $497,000 increase. We are also recommending the one-year experience pay, which is $829, a flat rate, which is a change of $230,738. The associated benefits in that total would be $288,423. And then also anytime you increase a faculty member's nine-month contract, and then they we do have about a third of our faculty that do teach summer, that affects summer pay. So we also want to make sure you're aware that the cost of summer pay would be affected by any increase. So that's what that summer pay impact will show is about almost $104,000. And then you add the associated benefit costs, and that's $129,000. So the overall cost of this recommended increase for full-time faculty with with salary and benefits would be the $915,343. Any any questions on the faculty?
Again, there's no action, regents. This is a staff report, putting things, we're putting our feelers out there. We want to hear back any and all comments, please.
What is our beginning salary?
Right now, our common base for bachelors is $50,000. But we have it's $50,000 for for a nine-month contract for faculty. We have more than more than half of our positions for faculty do require a higher level than bachelors. So anything and some of them actually require associate's degree and X amount of experience, like the industrial programs. There 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 are no, you know, basically bachelor's degrees. So basically, the the base, the very bottom of faculty would come in at would be the $50,000. And then it stacks after that based on your level of education. If you have a master's degree, if you have a doctorate degree, if you have an MFA, it it stacks based off of a schedule.
I know several years ago, we had this discussion, but I believe the ISDs around here have gotten raises recently. And I think some of them are starting out quite a bit higher than we are. Am I correct on that?
Some of them have. I haven't pulled the the latest. I do know that that some of them also stop paying for that extra education, whereas we pay for it. So ours comes in at the base, which is 50 at bachelor's, but then we stack. So if you came in making having a master's, and then, of course, we give tenure, ISDs don't. So I think it's kind of not comparing the same. But but some of them do or have started paying higher than than the 50. But again, you you don't get that extra stacking of extra income based off of more education. And we don't just pay the next degree. We also pay if you've worked hours toward that next degree, you also get paid for that. And then once you hit that next degree, then it then it is a flat amount. So we do also pay in between getting your degrees that are associated with what you're teaching.
The other thing is that we remain, as I looked at the Texas Community College Teachers Association survey, that we remain at number five in the state of the 50 on average. It's again, another comparator and so forth. But that's five with 10 of them being very, very large districts, Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, those Austin, those. And we're at number five.
And I think one other important factor why they're not, I guess you say they're they're actually apples and oranges. An ISD, they do not participate in social security tax. So anyone that works for an ISD, they do not get social security. They get their TRS retirement. Here at the college, we do participate in social security tax, so you get both. You get your if you participate in TRS, you get your TRS and you get your social security and is not impacted. You do not have to reduce one or the other to collect both. If yes, then we the windfall provision does not apply to us because we participate in social security. So if your employer participates in social security, then the windfall provision does not apply to you. You can collect can collect social security and TRS, and it does not reduce each other. So that's a big difference.
There are some community colleges that are the same in the same boat as well, some of those school districts.
And do you have a question? Would this be just a a one-time 3% in addition to their normal step? Because you have steps in place, correct? So this would this be in addition to the steps that are already occurring? Or how is that how does how does that work?
We do not have steps. So what we do is the faculty pay is based off of four components. One is the common base, which is right now it's at $50,000. This recommendation is to 51,240. But right now it's at $50,000, and that's if someone comes in at a bachelor's degree, or it could be associate's plus experience. And then we also have another component that's education. So we also have dollar amounts. This is all in policy. The board sets those schedules. So if you have a master's degree, an MFA, a doctorate, there's a certain amount that you also add on to the $50,000. And we do add on for hours in between reaching those degrees. So that's an education component. We also have a rank component. So as you move forward in your tenure here at the college and you reach assistant, associate, full professor, there's another dollar amount that's added on.
But and but you but your you but your pay raises have you you have in place increases every year? You mean, you have a one-year step, two-year step, three-year step?
No, that's that's more of an ISD model, and we do not have an ISD model.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
No, and then we have the experience pay, which is the $829, which is flat, but it's for all years here. And that we used to cap it, and that cap was removed, I believe, in 2014. So those are the four components of what make up a nine-month faculty salary. It's a pro rate. From what I understand with the IRS, it's a pro rate. If you were with a if you were with an institution that that has TRS retirement, and they did not participate in social security, but then you moved to an institution that did participate in social security and you're in TRS, they pro rate the amount that the windfall present provision would affect. Any other questions on faculty? Okay, thank you. For exempt employees, it's 3%, a 3% raise. It would be a flat 3%. So that'd be $443,274. Associated benefits would be 100 and almost 111 with a total of $554,000. The same 3% recommendation is for not exempt. That would be $220,000, $55,000 for benefits, and then almost $276,000 total. So if you look at the the grand total of faculty exempt, not exempt, you're looking at almost 1.4 in salary change due to the increase, $349,000 for the associated cost of benefits, and a little over 1.7 million for the total cost of this salary increase. Any questions?
Have we gotten any feedback from the Faculty Council on this?
Yes. Yes, I am. On on this proposal, at this point, I have a meeting with them, I think, next week. And I'm taking this language back to them. They've made their proposals, which is significantly different than this, as you might expect, significantly higher. But we continue to work in in be in close touch. It will have a meeting next week, and I'll 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 hear back from them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. On this slide, it shows you the changes in the overall, what we call our big buckets of of our expense dollars for salaries. So it's not just raises, it's everything, it's all-inclusive. So if you look at the faculty salaries, we had a few new positions that were added and and will be carried over to the new budget of about almost $208,000. And the effective employee turnover, what this is, is, you know, if we have if we have a faculty member that's been here a very long time and they retire, then so they're at the higher pay scale. You know, they they get all the components, the education, and that 829 for X years. I mean, it adds up to their nine-month compensation. So when they retire, we hire someone in, they come in at that lower level because they haven't they haven't reached tenure. They haven't had that year of experience, which can accumulate, you know, 20 years plus. So they're hired in at a lower at the starting rate, basically, of a faculty member. So there's some savings, dollar savings on a position that was budgeted of someone that was had been here a long time and retired, and then bringing someone in as to fill that vacancy. So you'll see that in the the effect of the employee turnover. It could also be offset by we have faculty promotions, but that would actually be a positive, not a negative. So that's in policy. So that that effect change would also be in this column. We have part-time salary changes, and that is more attributed to, we look back historically, and this is part-time or called adjuncts for for faculty. So we look back historically and see what we have paid, and we come up with like an average what we have budgeted. So it was determined that we needed to lower that adjunct budget by a little bit. So that's why you see the $174,000 decrease in that particular line item. And then, of course, you see the raises of 732, which we saw on the slide before. And then we have a vacancy factor. So all these categories will have a vacancy factor because I know we've talked about this before. It's not every position is not filled 100% of the time for 100% of the budget year. So we put in a vacancy vacancy factor, and it's a we use a 4%. So what we do is we look at all the salary dollars in the entire budget, all the categories together, and we calculate a 4%. And then that is prorated amongst the different categories of the employees. So that's where you get the vacancy factor. So you'll see an actual overall difference of $261,000, even though, you know, the raise is 732. But it's impacted by these other categories. Okay? So on exempt salaries, we had a new position. We had or hired in at then we have no part-time and exempt. And then the raises $64,000. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the line. So the 138 is on turnover, raises $376,000, and then here's that prorated vacancy factor. So the overall change would be the not quite $30,000. The next line, because I know that the board asked for this last year, is we do have a lot of exempt employees that are directly related to instruction, like our continuing education instructors. They are exempt employees, they are not faculty status. So, you know, we talked this morning quite a bit about the truck driving program, our excellent program. They are exempt employees, the ones that are full-time. We have in those certified nursing assistant programs, they are exempt. So they are instructional-related, but they're not faculty status. So we broke that out this year. So we had about $677,000 in new positions for exempt instructional. And that was primarily due to the CNA programs, the Certified Nursing Assistant Programs. We had, I think, about 12, we had 11 extra positions this this year on that. There were a couple other one in construction. We, you know, the board approved the construction trade program. So that's where the
I've got one there. I've got to add that 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 ties back into other conversations that where we showed the 28% in continuing education contact hours. That's where that increase demand on for faculty came from. So there was a 28% increase in those in that production in that area right there. That's the that's the purpose for that increase. Thank you.
Can I ask a question related? And I really do appreciate you pulling out exempt salaries instructional. So I think that is very, very illustrative for us. Do years' experience pay, degree programs, do those other four pillars of faculty salary come into play for those exempt salary instructional employees? Or is it just a salary?
It's a salary, but it's based off of, we try to find it comparable to an exempt position, or also it depends on industry demand. So we do, we place them to be competitive, but we also place them within a comparable salary range of of a regular exempt position.
But they do not receive an $829 experience pay per year?
Yes, but that's correct.
So when we see a 3% raise for exempt salaries, it would include those instructional folks as well if they've been here more than one year?
Yes, ma'am.
And again, I know we're talking about big buckets here, not each individual.
As long as they were hired by May 1st, they would get the exempt and non-exempt, would get the increase. So on on the exempt instructional, the total cost of the salary new positions increases, benefits would be the 707, 707,000. So on non-exempt salaries, it's we had a new position, $31,000. Effective employee turnover was negative 98. Part-time salary changes, we're adding about $499,000 back in. We had reduced it prior because of COVID. So we're adding some of that back in. But we also have quite a few new initiatives and programs that we're starting. I know, again, that we talked about this morning, the new center in Aransas County. A lot of these new initiatives will be primarily ran by part-time. A lot of the instruction comes in as part-time because we need them for a certain point in time, not an all-year thing. But some of them will be full-time, but primarily they're part-time. So that's where some of the part-time dollars adding into this are some of our new initiatives also to some of the new programs that we've talked about this morning. And then the raises at 219, which we just previously saw. Again, the vacancy factor, and then the total would be 699,000. So now we go to the salaries and benefits for the South Side. We have a prorated estimation of new positions of 941,601, $941,601. So, of course, we don't have turnover, we don't have part-time, we don't have vacancy rate because this is a forecast. So those those columns don't exist. So if we did start hiring and they were provided some type of increase, it would be the 3,745. So the projection or forecast for salary and benefits for South Side is the 945,346. And then the cost of benefits across the board for all the different categories, the total would be the 585,786. So if you look at everything across the board, including the forecast for South Side or projections for South Side staffing, it's the $3.2 million. That would be for all changes to the different salary categories and benefits. Any questions? So this gives you that, like I said, we call the one bucket of the actual categories. So the slide before gave you the details. This just gives you the basically the bottom, the the bottom line. So the description, the preliminary salary benefits for faculty salaries, the total for the FY '21 budget is 34.6 million. It would be increased by $206,100. So the total budget for FY '22 would be the 34, basically 34.9 million. Same thing with exempt, 13.5 million. The bottom line increase would be the almost 30,000 to give us a 13.5 million budget. Exempt salaries instructional-related is the 1.6 million in this current budget with the increase, 707. With the '22 projection would be 2.3 million. And then non-exempt, an 11.2. Add in the increase, it'd be almost 11.9 million. And then the prorated for South Side, the 166, and then the increase is 945, and preliminary is 1.1 million. Because we do have a couple of positions that are already in this year's budget that are will be moved to the South Side. So we did already have a couple of things in the current budget. And then the associated benefits. So the bottom line, the total budgeted amounts for our salaries would be the 80 point 80 million point almost point 3. Then we would be adding in almost 3 point a little over 3.2 million. So the FY '22 budget would be 83,516,362 for the FY '22 budget.
I have to go back and apologize for not asking this earlier. Back to the increase in non-exempt salaries of 699,000, you said, how much of that is attributable to the Aransas County project?
The exact dollar amount? I don't have these. Let's see, the exact dollar amount.
And why are those there as opposed to not in?
We have, it's about 117,000. It's an accumulation of new programs from Aransas County Workforce Center, about 117,000. We have industrial trade programs for about another 100,000, career training is 175, GED 78, student enrollment 37. So it's that part-time is accumulation of all those different type programs and initiatives.
Okay. And why are those in non-exempt salaries versus exempts instructional?
Because they're part-time hourly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they're not exempt.
You might have said that, I apologize.
It's fine, it's part-time. Non-exempt means you're hourly, you get paid by the hour, whether you're full-time or part-time. And then exempt is you get a set salary in there full-time.
And do we have, are we showing corresponding revenue for those projects in our revenue projections? I realize we're not there yet, but are we showing earned revenue? Is there miscellaneous, is that going to show up in miscellaneous revenue? Where's that going to show up in our in our revenue model to to cover those costs? I guess is what I'm looking at.
I think revenue will be coming up, but I'll defer that.
Okay.
No, that's coming up.
Tell me where to look when we get there.
Yes, yeah. So John will be presenting the revenue section. But I don't think we've gotten to that level where we have provided detail, that level of detail on the revenue piece at that level. So more to come.
I think it's important, as we did with the nursing program, to really understand
Yes.
the, the cost involved in those programs and where we're going to potentially see revenue from those as well.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Okay, so that is the presentation for the expense that are related to salaries and benefits. Any questions? Any other questions from anyone?
Thank you so much for this information. Have we, which I kind of assume you have, but do we, with the job market being what it is, particularly for lower-paid employees right now and the, and the difficulty we've talked about in terms of hiring, what steps are we taking to make those lower-paid hourly jobs more competitive so we can attract more workers?
Right now, we, I mean, we have a range that we can hire in. It's not a set, you're going to come in here at $12 no matter what. So we do have a range that we can work with and we do base that off of the money that is in our budget. So we do have, I guess you say a little wiggle room on an entry level. Right now, as far as, that's primarily part-time. Part-time would, would maybe the category that you're talking about. We're just now starting to bring that type of, or that category of employees back. Right now, from what I'm hearing from, from some of my staff, we're not having a huge challenge. But I know as we start ramping up over the next few weeks or even the next month, getting ready for fall, then, then we'll have a little bit more information. But we do have some flexibility in, in what we offer.
What we've also experienced over the past few years is the demand for skilled employees coming in required that our, that our pay be up on the top end. And so electricians and plumbers and carpenters and those, we're up in the 20s per hour. And so those are skilled and those are full-time. That was, that was in the years past. Of course, right now, we're trying to assess what the, where everybody really is with the economy. Because I think those opportunities will be, will be readily available for them to come in at higher numbers. Again, that's primarily on the skilled. The part-time's a different story. But duly noted, we've, you've mentioned this a couple of times and we've been doing some analysis on this.
Great. Thank you.
And what we did a couple of years ago, we worked with facilities, especially on, on what you're talking about, the HVAC and the plumbers, electricians. We pulled them out of a regular schedule and we put them into their own salary schedule. So they have their own pay grades, I guess you could say, and ranges. So we lifted up those entry-level hourly rates because they have a range they can work within. So we did do that a couple of years ago anticipating, because that was challenging a couple of years ago before COVID, for those type of, what we call highly skilled or the skilled workforce. We also did that in another area, we pulled IT off onto their own schedule to, to put them into more competitive salary ranges or to go mid or even higher in the range if we needed to, to bring in the qualified people that we needed. So we did that a couple of years ago to try to get a little ahead and be more proactive with those types of positions. Okay, well, thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Jackie. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Good afternoon. Okay, so we'll now go over our preliminary expenses for next year on our non-salary categories. We are looking at about 1.8 million in requested, requested increases. So for electricity, we feel we're a little under-budgeted there based off of last year's actuals, so we need to put a little bit there. We are anticipating about 313,000 for custodial services, which is due to increased cost to our contract for our current campuses, and then the addition of the Aransas County Workforce Development Center. We are anticipating a little bit of an increase for our security monitoring services, and about 352,000 for our insurance, which is an increase to our insurance premium cost. For travel, we do anticipate our employees traveling more next year now that travel restrictions are being lifted. This was an area that got really affected last year significantly due to COVID. So for fiscal year 2020, we had about $800,000 budgeted for travel. And in fiscal year 2021, we cut that budget by 70%, down to 230,000. So we're looking at adding about 249,000 to travel, which will bring our travel budget back to about 56% of what we had budgeted in fiscal year 2020. For our South Campus, we are looking at about 211,000 in operating expenses for two months. So that would be supplies, custodial, ground maintenance, utilities, things like that. And then we're also anticipating some increases in our other O&amp;M expenses, and that'll be for supplies, contract labor, equipment, and things like that. So this slide here is a continuation, continuation of our preliminary expense budget. So at the top here, you can see the total preliminary salary and benefits that Ms. McDonald just explained. And then we have our non-salary expenses, which we just went over, the 1.8. The million dollars that we've had for the South Campus, we are going to reduce that to zero because we are reallocating those funds to cover those salaries and operating expenses for the South Campus. Our contingency will increase by about 48,000, and that's to meet that required 1.5% of our policy. So our total preliminary non-salary expenses, the net effect ends up being a little bit over 850,000. And our total preliminary expenses with all categories ends up being a little over $4 million. Do we have any questions on these?
I don't have a question for you, but I am concerned about the, the combination of the instructional salary, exempt salaries instructional and non-exempt salaries, that 707,699. So I want to make sure that when we get to the revenue piece, that we are showing how those are going to be offset. Because that, those two items alone are big jumps with, again, with assumptions around instructional needs and part-time workers and those kinds of things. I just want to make sure that we are seeing where those, where that revenue is going to come from to offset that 1.4 million. So again, that's not a direct question for you, but, but it brings me to, to make sure that we get that question answered either today or in future.
Yes, ma'am. We don't have it today, but we can definitely have it prepared for the July workshop. And also in our July workshop, that 1.8 million in any increases, we will discuss that mapping to the strategic plan as well.
Great.
Let me go with one point that's, I think is important, is on that 700,000 for the exempt instructional. Those are projections and many of those positions are term, they're temporary. So if the demand isn't there, we don't hire them. But that's what we're forecasting and projecting, that we will have that demand to, to have, to, the need to fund that many term or temporary full-time positions to me, especially those CNA programs. But if the man's not there, we don't hire them. If that helps clarify.
Thank you.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Historically, the last three years, I believe we've budgeted for a police department. Is that in this budget again?
Yes.
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 We, we don't have a police department yet, do we?
So the document is submitted, we do have security, we do pay police to, to provide security. A police department packet has been submitted to TECO, we're waiting response from them. And then as soon as we get that response, we should be moving rather quickly. I don't want to say how quickly. Tammy, can you talk to us about the steps? She and Augie and I had this meeting, I guess Thursday last week, on the next steps there. So that packet's been submitted, how long after?
The TECO application packet was submitted last week and I tracked it and it was received on Friday. So I know it's in their hands. But it's going to, we're going to, we're working on timeline and it, nothing will move forward until they actually come and make what they call a site visit. So they'll have to, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement will have to come and make a site visit. So that could take over a month from what we understand. It just depends on their schedules. So it could be more than a month before they actually can come and make that site visit. And then it takes a little bit longer. So it could be two to three months before we even receive an agency number. But we'll be working on some things in between that time, like we're working on, on actual scheduling and staffing plan. We're also working on, we'll be putting together some information on the looks of uniforms and badges. And we have a, a schedule of equipment we'll have to start getting. It's just you can't put the cart before the horse because you want to get the actual license number, the agency license number given to you. So we do have a timeline. So it could take a few months because you have to hire, you know, we have to advertise and hire. So once we get that agency number, I see that we could have some, you'll start seeing a lot of things start happening once we get that agency number. So it could be one to three months before we actually get an agency number. Just depends all their, you know, depends on the state's schedule. But it should not be months and months, it's just a few more months.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. John Johnson will continue with the revenue budget.
Oh, boy, he's the one who gets to answer all my questions.
Okay. As indicated on the attached slide, these are the revenue challenges and assumptions that we used in, in trying to come up with a revenue budget to cover the current expenditures that were presented to me when, when putting this together. As indicated on the slide, the college has three main sources of revenue, tuition and fees, property taxes, and state appropriations. This is nothing new. I won't belabor state appropriations. I think we've been over that piece. On the tuition and fees, of course, when I'm building my budget, I look at the, any rate changes that have been passed by the board. I also look at changes in state mandated and/or self-imposed tuition exemptions and waivers. And the other piece, of course, is enrollment projections. As you know, for the current year, the board, there are no tuition increases that were passed along to the students. And my projections, the projections that I, I was given include, remain flat at our 2019 level. So we don't, we're not projecting any increase in enrollment over 2019. My property taxes assumptions are, are a 3% increase in the valuation growth in the, in the district and a $300 million increase in new construction. That has been pretty consistent from year to year. The preliminary appraisal that I received in April from the appraisal district showed 3.1, 3% increase in our appraisal. So it's pretty, pretty consistent with what I was projecting. Are there any questions on that? I can get more into detail on that as, as we get more information. There's not a whole lot out there. I was on the phone with the appraisal district today. I think our, our property valuations will come in a little higher than the 3%, but I'm not ready to, to, to set that number out there right now.
What have the collections been? We, we budgeted a less, less, a lower collection rate than we have done in typical years for the current fiscal year.
Right. In the current fiscal year, we reduced our collection rate by 1%. When I was putting together my budget for next year and looking at the numbers, right now, we're running an additional 1% below that number that, that I used. So that will go into my calculation. The, the other thing that I'm doing when I'm setting my tax rate this year, I'm using the same overall tax rate for M&amp;O that we're currently using now. Just for your information, to build my budget. Any other questions?
Well, the other question actually is not directly related to you. It's going to have to come, again, where, where are we going to find those? Especially that, that, that 700,000 in the non-exempt, so. I'll hold that, it's not your question.
All right. Thank you.
It's a little, it's a little Nora's question, that's whose question it is. Yes, go ahead, continue. Moving along.
Moving along. Can we have slide of fall credit headcount?
You have control.
Good afternoon. This slide, this slide is a review of our headcount since 2016, fall 2016. And examining fall 2018 and 2019, we saw enrollments trending up. However, fall 2020 was directly impacted by COVID-19. At this time, fall '21 enrollment is very preliminary. However, we do anticipate enrollment for the academic year for '21, '22 to be the same as compared to academic year 2019, 2020. Additionally, the next slides show spring '21 and summer '21 with an increase in enrollment. On the spring credit headcount slide, this slide is our state-reported data for spring credit headcount, including flex entry data. The fall flex, flex enrollment was carried over to spring. This slide is a good indication of the strategic shift that the college did during the pandemic. The focus on increasing second eight weeks added 2,880 flex students to our CBM count. We anticipate using the same strategies utilizing eight-week courses to increase enrollment. Summer '1 credit headcount, this slide is a review of our headcount for summer semester since 2017. Summer '1, 2021 is preliminary and trending up. Based on these three slides, we are projecting that the academic year will be similar to 2019, 2020. Total annual contact hours for credit and continuing education courses for the academic year. On this slide, we will focus on the academic year 2019, 2020, and there is an increase from 2018 to 20, from, from 2018, 2019. Additionally, the data for the academic year 2021 is not complete from the Higher Education Coordinating Board and is preliminary. Continuing education is on a quarter system with quarters one and two being counted. Quarter three is not yet available. CE and credit contact hours continue staying strong, and the trend is going up based on 2019, 2020 academic year. Do we have any questions?
So at this point, if you had to project what our ending contact hour number is going to be based on the best available information today, what do you think our contact hour funding is going to be at the end of the fiscal year? Not funding hours, sorry, contact hours.
2019, 2019, 2020.
Do you think we're going to be flat at five, we're not flat, but we're going to be at 5.4?
Summer, summer has always been the indicator for fall. Now, last year, we don't know what happened. That was, that's the anomaly. You can't use it for, you have to, you have to cull for it and/or control for it for that year. But typically, when we see normal patterns during summer, we use those to predict conservatively, conservatively albeit for, for the fall semester. So I just want to say that because we're going to start talking about that more and more as we move into solidifying the budget. So we're watching summer very carefully. And I just want to add that Ms. Patricia is, is stepping in in the interim role of Vice President of Student Services and Enrollment here at the college. There'll be a formal announcement coming out very quickly, but I just want to go ahead and take this opportunity to let everybody know she's stepping in for Dr. Rito, who's back in the Havelina Nation. And I called him this Saturday, woke him up very early to see how he was doing. And, but anyway.
He texted me this morning.
Patricia, yeah, we told him we weren't going to let him get far from us, but Patricia's stepping up and so.
Additionally, I just want to let y'all know, we are doing many initiatives this summer and have been since, since the spring. Going to Lapa Ben Amal, opening additional Saturdays here on campus. Still continuing with some virtual events. We had one last night on Apply Texas. So we are doing a variety of, of events to promote that we're open, promote that come here, you know, we're here to help. We've also opened up additional TSI exams. So everything has been, and working with college relations, working with academic departments. Everyone pretty much is just, you know, we're all hands on deck, doing a variety of things to, to promote that, you know, come back.
a variety of things to, to promote that, you know, come back.
Another thing, the national perspective, the statewide and national perspectives, positions on enrollment, community college enrollment for the next academic year, is that it's really going to be the latter half of fall. We'll see a relatively strong fall compared to last year. Second half of fall even stronger. Spring is going to be the big push, is going to be the big rush, rather. Whether we're pushing or pulling there, that's when it's going to be strongest.
Okay. So, going back to our 2022 preliminary revenue budget, I've basically been over all the assumptions. The state appropriation, of course, will go up by 879,000. My property taxes, we, our, our budget right now includes an increase of $3.2 million in property tax collections, based on my estimates. With those collections, we should be able to keep the same tax rate if, if, and I do believe we'll be able to lower the tax rate somewhat because our debt service rate will also be going down slightly. So, I think we'll be in a good position to do that. So, based on those two, our total 2021, '22 revenue budget would be $111 million.
Is it safe to say that you are being very conservative in your tuition and fee assumptions, but that you anticipate an increase in tuition and fees because of an increase in enrollment? We were keeping the rate the same, but you anticipate an increase in enrollment? So, what, what, this is conservative. What would be your middle-of-the-road estimate on tuition and fees if you had to provide an estimated increase based on the other assumptions?
The, the projections I received directly from, from Patricia, so those aren't my projections. I just do it based on the numbers that they give me. So, I think, you know, I think, you know, from the conversations we had, I think in fall enrollment will start out slow. I think people will start to come back as they feel more comfortable with COVID, coming back to class. I think, my belief is that spring will come back extremely well. So, keeping the same number, I think, is safe in the overall, because I think overall, with the increase in demand for contract instruction and CE, I think, I think we'll be in good shape. I don't anticipate additional revenue. I, I'm not looking to, to collect additional revenue, but, you know.
John's always more conservative with that.
No, I, I appreciate that.
But it comes from my office, okay? Let me just kind of answer the question. So, I just, it comes from my office and it goes to Rito and then Patricia, and then we all bouncing around. And then John says, "All right, guys, come on." But, but conservatively, if you think about the entire year, don't think of, don't think of content, headcount just yet. We're thinking revenue.
Right.
Okay. Think of revenue totally. I just want to, just so, so if you look at it from that standpoint, to answer the question, I think 2% would be conservative even for, at this point, because those are just early indicators. We have to see what summer two looks like, too. And then we'll be looking at the combination of both. We, we can go in flat, flat with 19 number. I mean, that's just to answer the question today. Obviously, there's no action being taken. That's where, that's where we're putting our chips for today. We'll move them down the road, I suspect.
But I, I certainly understand the conservative nature where we are today, but also I think it's important, based on what you're telling us about your assumptions and your projections, then what might be a moderately conservative approach might be a 1% or 2% increase in tuition fees. And again, I'm, I'm looking at how we're offsetting some of those costs that, that you're talking about, the potential for increased cost in instructional services and in non-exempt, based on some regional instruction. So, I, that's where I'm looking for.
The revenues.
Where are those numbers coming from? Because if, if those places increase, then are we actually decreasing our base, our base tuition?
Sure.
And so, that's.
Understood.
Yeah. That's where I want to really understand and, and help us understand that, that full tuition and revenue picture, that earned revenue picture.
Well, the reason why, you know, we're, obviously with the no increase in tuition, we start, we start there. So, it's a little trickier this year than we've had. And so, usually we've had, you know, you can estimate an extra, if you've increased tuition, like we did in years prior, you can have, we can start off with an extra half million dollars. Okay. We don't have that. So, we're, we're having to do really, really fine-tuned forecasting, which is going to be different than the years prior, frankly. So, that's why we're a little kind of reluctant at this point and just get the answers that we have, giving you the answers that we have at this point. This, this next six weeks is when we really fine-tune everything. And we really start seeing summer two enrollments start to head up and, and seeing if it, if it's consistent with summer one. Then you've got another indicator right there, so that we can move ahead. But duly noted, we'll, we'll find the revenues. We're not going to project anything without a, without a source.
Yes. We also need to take into consideration the external factors. What is the economic condition and how is the rollout of the vaccine coming along? And so, I can tell you, I've been out, people are out there shopping, buying, so the economy is quickly, you know, building itself up. It's this whole pinup that's been out there, you know, people have saved their money and now they're out willing, willing to spend. But here's the other workforce factor, right? I think earlier I mentioned that the low-skilled positions are still open. They're still, you know, you read about this K-shaped recovery, you know, people in education, yep, they're doing well. But then you have this lower-skilled population that has not fared well yet, coming out of this recovery. And so, here's where Delmar comes into play. When you hear about the truck drivers who are not able to, the, the companies who hire truck drivers are struggling to hire these folks, that's where Delmar comes in. We can rescale, retool these individuals and get them back into the workforce. So, so part of that conservative that you see here, we are being conservative on our tuition, but we see a ramping up of these type of skill sets. Truck driver comes to mind because they're really making good money out there today, getting paid double time because of this shortfall in the workforce. So, it's things that, of that nature, that we're seeing in the near future. And, and so, to John's point, we may not see it in the first couple of months, but I can see it scaling up significantly by the spring term, taking advantage of our workforce development type of programs, our credentials, our stack credentials type of things. So, more to come on that. So, this pretty, if there are no other questions, at the end of the day, what we have here today is we presented a revenue expense that balances itself out. 75% of our operating expenses comes from salary, and I think we've talked in detail as to what the nature is of those individual expenses. And then we also talked about the 1.8 million in non-operating. So, that's how we're seeing things today, but there's still a lot more information, external information, that we're waiting for. From now until our workshop, we'll have better and more firmed-up information. Any questions?
Do you have any data on the students? Because, you know, all the students are, you know, especially the high schoolers, they're all coming back face-to-face. Do you have any projections on those numbers coming in? Because I know a lot of them didn't want to go to Delmar because everything's online and they're, and most of our students are really face-to-face type students. So, I was just wondering if you had any projections of them increasing into our programs next fall and spring?
Yes. For the fall, that'll be the, we'll be back to pre-COVID, close to pre-COVID scenarios there. They are definitely asking for face-to-face. It'll increase the 60% that we currently have, that we had in the fall, no, excuse me, the 40% that we had in the fall and the spring will, will, will look like, we're, 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 we're working towards it looking like as close to fall in 19 as possible. In other words, it's close, I'm calling it 90% at this point. I just, we just, that's what we're shooting for.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes, sir.
You actually, this is a summary budget. You actually budget down to the departmental level, don't you?
Yes. When we issue our budget book, it's definitely at a department level. Yes, sir.
So, you'll have all the information that Regent Scott's asking for?
At the department level, we can definitely work on that, definitely, if that's what you like, if those, the wishes of the board. Did I understand that correctly?
Well, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we have that information.
Sure.
Yes, yes. It's definitely at that, that detail level.
I appreciate the information. They, they may or may not.
Oh, I see. I see.
And another thing, it would be helpful for me if we could have something that we could measure our property taxes against, like the average for the other 49 schools, both M&amp;O and debt service, and the average for the, the large colleges, so that we could see where we fall within those averages.
Yes, yes. So, so, yeah, that, that could be a, a whole new, different conversation, I would think, right? Because, you know, I, I think we heard earlier that there's a committee being established today at the state level that's going to look at the different variant funding levels. But at the same token, you know, our strategy is going to look significantly different than another institution, and then the funding levels can, can, can vary.
I'm just interested in the property taxes.
I see. I see.
So, if we're at 28 cents and the average is 26 cents, we'll know we're right about average.
Yes. So, and historically, we've always presented what our, the tax rate implication is at the residential level.
We've measured ourselves against ourselves. What, what I'm looking for is measuring us against the other large colleges and against the other 49.
Yeah. There's, that information is readily at tac.org, and we'll have that information sent out to you.
That would be helpful. Just, just when we're doing the budgeting process.
Absolutely. It'll, it'll come, it'll come soon.
Okay.
This week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Well, you've definitely seen a lot of me today, huh? Wow. Okay. All right. So, so at the May board meeting, the board approved an action item for the college to call and refund all of the Series 2011 bonds maturing on and after August 15, 2022, and delegate the approval of the final terms to the president and/or vice president and chief financial officer, as long as the final terms result in the following. Number one, a net cost savings to the college, at least 2% of the principal amount of the refund Series 2011 bonds, and final maturity date of the Series 2021 bond does, does not extend beyond the final maturity date of the Series 2011 bonds, i.e. August 15, 2023. So, I have on the line today, Mr. Dave Gordon from Estrada Hennehos and Company to provide an update.
Thank you, Raul. As Raul mentioned, back in May, the board approved the parameters authorization for refunding of certain outstanding obligations that the, the college had. As you may recall, we discussed the fact that although you've historically gone to the, the public debt markets, and that's really the most efficient way to sell debt, if there's some substantial size or a longer duration. In this case, there was, there was only two maturities of bonds that were callable. And given that, and the relatively small size of the transaction, we chose to sell the debt through a, a private placement with a bank. We prepared a solicitation that the college sent out, went out to approximately 20 banks. As you can see on this page, the college received eight very promising bids from, from different banks. PNC was the low bidder at 50 basis points or 0.5%. That had to do partly with the very short duration of the debt, as you'll see in the next page, but it certainly also the, the college's outstanding credit ratings of AA+, AA, AA2 also played into that. As you can see on page two here, the college entered into the agreement again with, with PNC. That's 8.435 million in terms of refunding bonds. The, the savings are approximately $488,000 on a cash flow basis, 484,000 or so on a net present value basis. Again, part of the reason the transaction was structured this way was just because of the short duration. There are only two maturities that were refundable or callable. Those maturities are 2022 and 23. And given some of the recent tax law changes, there wasn't the ability for the college to really easily add these maturities to other transactions to refinance them. So, again, about 484,000 net present value savings, 5.7% or so. That's about, you know, really what you could expect to achieve out of this. Again, extremely low interest rate of 50 basis points. And so, the college should be very happy, I think, with those results. So, are there any questions from anybody on the board?
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I don't see any questions. We appreciate that. Very good work. Thank you, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Gordon.
Yes, thank you. If I may, we can call it half a million dollars. I think that sounds a lot better. Thank you very much.
That's true. Good, good point.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Bye.
Moving on to our professional service contract review annually, Ms. McDonald reviews this list with us, so that we are on top of major contracts that the board has authorized. So, Ms. McDonald?
Yes, thank you. The list that you see before you is color-coded. So, this is our list of professional service contracts that we present to the board. I believe we do bring it twice a year. The last time we brought it to the board was last December. So, if it's color-coded in yellow, that means that that particular contract will be expiring sometime in '21. If there is a date highlighted in blue, that means there was some type of a date adjustment. So, it would be a date only. There was one of those. And then if it's highlighted in orange, that means it expired this calendar year. So, we had nothing expiring this calendar year, because we actually had quite a few things expire in December when it was last presented to you. So, once it's expired and you've seen it, then I remove it from the list, because it's, it's completed. So, if you, if you go through the list, like I said, we do have a couple of contracts that will be expiring, like urban engineering from the 2014 bond, from the 2016 bond, Ginzler Turner Ramirez. We have an extended date, and some of my colleagues, if you do have particular questions about any individual contract, they, they will, they are my backup, and they will be happy to answer those. If you look at the, I think the most significant change was when this was presented in December, is the section that's labeled IDIQ. All of those contracts are new. So, that whole section would be a new contract from when it was presented in December. Last September, the board approved, I guess you'd say, a pool of professional services that the administration could pull from. They were already pre-approved. And as projects came available, then administration pulled from that pool that you pre-approved. So, these are a lot of those contracts that we have now negotiated and put in place. So, that IDIQ is a new section, and we do have quite a few contracts that have been issued in '21. And then if you keep going through, we do have Allied Universal, which is our contractor security service, will expire in August, and we are getting ready to issue an RFP for that particular service. So, do I have any, any questions on our professional contract service list?
Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Dr. Halcom is going to give us a review on an instructional program review process and a status report.
Okay. We're putting it up here. Just a moment. There we go. Oh, no, that's not it. Sarah Howson. Okay. Sorry for the delay. Um, let me find it here.
As they're teeing this up, as they're teeing this up, this is, Regents, this report.
There it is.
Oh, there you go.
Wow. Okay. Hey, got to have a little fun here. Madam Chair, esteemed Regents, and Dr. Eskamia, every five years, we have a program review of our instructional programs. And the intent is to improve quality, of course, of our programs. We evaluate about a dozen of them every annual cycle. We comply with our SACS principles. As you can see, principles 7.1, 8.1, 8.2A, 8.2B, and 8.2C. So, it's very important that we do these every year. Now, we have a program review committee that is appointed by the dean of the division, and it's comprised mostly of faculty within the program, but does include faculty from outside the program. Sometimes, we may have a person from a university. We may have a student on there. So, we have a mixture of people on the committee to evaluate the particular instructional program. It may be also someone from an advisory committee for our workforce programs. for our workforce programs as well. The Office of Institutional Effectiveness and Assessment coordinates the program review process, training. They give training. That's Dr. Wilson's area that does this. They also give guidance. An instruction book is given to the committee, and so her area also produces the instruction manual. It's quite detailed. And they have orientation sessions with the faculty committee. And then they also have data training, because the institutional research office also provides data resources, and they produce a booklet with all the data for that instructional program. And so they do some training on that as well. Typically, it takes about a year to complete this review process. And after the committee makes a recommendation, it goes to the department chair, the divisional dean, and the chief academic officer to also review the documents and assign a recommendation. I'll talk about those four categories of recommendations in a subsequent slide. There are seven core criteria that we look at in this program review, and I'll give you a few examples of each area. We have review of assessment processes. This may include identifying areas of excellence and areas of needed improvement. The faculty support of program learning. This can include faculty and instructional support activities and student satisfaction surveys. So the institutional research area does send out student surveys, and that's part of our data book as well. Curriculum integration and mobility. An example here may be how easy it is for students to transfer to other colleges and universities. Student educational intent. What college are the students intending to go to? And what is the rate of job placement? Effective personnel utilization may be something like, what are the faculty teaching loads? What's the advising load for those faculty? What professional development do the faculty do? And those are listed in this program review as well. There's an analysis of cost effectiveness. That can include productivity, fiscal responsibility, resource utilization, operating budget, and equipment costs. Then last, strategic advantage. This is the unique ability to fill a niche for a demonstrated community need and a student's access to broader fields of study. And I just gave you a few examples of what they look at for each of those seven criteria. Now, there are four possible outcomes of a program review. It could be deemed positive, conditional, probationary, or recommendation to terminate a program. So a conditional program would need an annual review. If a if the chair, the dean, the CIO say this is conditional, then that program needs to do an annual review to see where they are at any particular time, see if they're correcting any deficiencies. Probationary indicates intent to terminate a program after one year if deficiencies are not corrected, and then terminate the program has failed to correct the deficiencies after conditional and probationary status. Now, what I'm sharing with you today are the program reviews that we have done from twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-one thus far. And you can see, most of our programs, actually, all but one was deemed positive status. And I do want to point out, the physics one was unfortunate. We did lose that professor. He had passed away, and so it was, we had to have temporary people in there. And so, you know, it was difficult to get all of that information together. So, and that that program was only run by one full-time faculty and adjuncts. So you may see conditional there. They are rectifying that with a, we have a fine tenure-track faculty in physics now, and they're rectifying any of the issues that they had. Okay? Are there any questions about program review? And I also have Dr. Wilson here, since she's highly involved in program review as well, with the training aspects. Do you have any questions?
Members, any questions? Thank you very much for this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Board members, we'll move into our pending item list. And you will notice in August, we're doing some quarterly investment and financial reports as well as a quarterly internal audit report. We expect a preliminary report from our ad hoc bylaws committee, and then potential action on their recommendations in September, and a SACS QEP, a report on the rebranding efforts. And as a part of our earlier discussion, that may be an opportunity, Dr. Eskimia, and I'll let you determine if you can add that in to think about the, an update on the strategic enrollment plan. So if those two things make sense to to report on side-by-side, that probably would would make some sense, if we can get that to happen. And then our, we have a annual report in September on tax abatement. So this is, this is additional items rather than just the routine, routine items that that come before us. Any questions on our pending item list? Great. We will move into our consent agenda. We have, on the consent agenda, approval of minutes, acceptance of investments, and acceptance of financial reports. Are there any items that need to be brought for separate discussion? If not, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Thank you, Mr. Kelly, seconded by Regent Hutchinson. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. That motion passes. And now, moving into our regular agenda items, we are going to have discussion regarding a new program. Dr. Halcom is going to share with us some information on a new electrician program.
Let's see if I can get the presentation. I'm sorry. Sarah's helping me. Yay!
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Okay, we are proposing a new applied, Associate of Applied Science Electrician Program to begin in the fall of twenty-twenty-two. It needs a permission or approval by the Board of Regents. Then, if you approve, it needs to go to the coordinating board and SACS COC for approval. This was approved by the curriculum committee in January twenty-twenty-one. So we go through that process first of going to curriculum committee. And they were very pleased with the proposal. We're also looking at Levels One and Two certificates. And you might notice this morning when we had discussion that certificates are stackable with the degree, and so that's a great benefit to our students. Now, they are going to start an occupational skills award as well, but that does not need board approval for that. But it is somewhat a part of this whole program. The rationale for beginning this new program is that electricians are in high demand locally. Their program was developed in response to the need from local industry partners. Other colleges also offer the program, San Jacinto, El Paso, Lee College, Houston Community College, to name a few. Now, this program covers a variety of topics. You can see those in the slide. Motors, transformers, electrical testing, electrical power transmission. And what's important, this is part of an apprenticeship program. And also, it prepares students for that electrical journeyman exam preparation as well. And the NCCER certification, which we talked about quite a bit this morning, also comes into play here. And NCCER is the National Center for Construction, Education, and Research. And they're looking at that for certification in OSHA. The job marketability, it does show growth rate of a little over fourteen percent for electricians. It is a targeted occupation. The median salary in this region is about twenty-four dollars, eighteen cents per hour. And there is a lot of local industry support. And you can see in the slide that we have, like Scott Electric, Stream Construction, et cetera, that are supportive. Now, what's our institutional capacity? We have some instructors instructors already in the occupational safety and in construction area that are able to teach some of those areas. We already have existing courses, four of them, that will become part of this program that are also utilized in another programs. There are available classrooms for instruction on the West Campus. As we get enrollment, we will need a full-time instructor to be able to be hired to teach as enrollment increases. And two to three adjunct instructors, we anticipate needing as well. And they'll have to meet full credentialing. In the future, yeah, we'll need some training equipment. Laura Wright, who is here, had recommended training equipment, one of her faculty of about six thousand dollars. And Ms. Laura Wright is here today. She was earlier, and she's to help with any questions. She's chair of the Architecture, Aviation, and Automotive Department, and she put this proposal together for curriculum committee. Are there any questions for me or Ms. Wright?
Questions, Regent Bennett?
I've got a question. We've got a local union that also has classes. Are we working with that union, or are we competing against them?
I'll address that one.
Oh, okay.
The Corporate Services Department Division here at the college, under Dean Dan Corus, they sponsor nine of the National DOL apprenticeships. And the local electrical union is one of the ones that we sponsor and have for approximately twelve years.
So we're working with them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question, too. First, sounds wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. And definitely, there is a need for it, as with any new program. And and I understand that you've listed some additional costs. Do we have a sense of overall what the increased expense would be and how we would pay for that?
Yeah, so basic, a full-time professor, we talked about base pay being about fifty thousand. Typically, for credentialing of a program like this, they could have an associate degree with many years of experience to qualify, or bachelor's degree. So they would be a little bit, you know, around the fifty thousand dollar range, plus about six thousand in equipment right now. So that's really what we're looking at. Was there anything else, Laura, that I missed for cost? And then adjunct wages, those are listed in policy as well, and it depends on the education level. It could be twenty-five hundred dollars, three thousand dollars per each adjunct faculty. Does that help?
Absolutely. Thank you. Clearly not very expensive in terms of how much it would cost. But are we anticipating, just by increased enrollment, we would offset those costs?
I have not looked at that data, but I would certainly hope so. I have not done a budget analysis of that, but I think that enrollment and our success points, et cetera, could end up paying for that.
I have a follow-up question on that. What is the average salary for the graduates of this program?
Let me go back here.
Median.
Says about fifty thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five annually.
So we're going to pay the instructor about what the graduate's going to make?
Yes.
Really?
That's why it's hard. Yeah, we have trouble finding instructors in many of our workforce programs, especially welding process technology. They can get more money out in industry. So it's a struggle.
But what's been our methodology to offset that that sort of situation is you, we find the ones who do not want to work out in the field. We find the ones that are retiring and moving into and and accepting this type of salary. Plus, plus there's overloads and other things like that as well. But we typically go, we we typically go for, go after those those faculty members who've been in the field, who are done with being in the field and want to be teachers. That's that's the idea. We've done that. That model has worked.
That that makes sense.
Yes, sir.
So this is upgrading our current offerings in in electrical to a full AAS degree?
Yeah, I'm going to let Laura address this.
Thanks. Hi, Laura.
Yes, we are.
If you speak into the mic.
Step up to the microphone, please.
We've developed a full credit program based on the programs of study that were developed by the co-board. It follows two programs of study, the for both the residential and light commercial electricians program, which are covered with our Level One, Level Two certificates. And then the industrial program, also covered by the Level Two certificate. And the AAS covers all of those. They're stacked, so.
Other questions?
No, I guess I'm happy that you're talking about this program. I actually have a nephew who's coming from Albuquerque, New Mexico, to do the electrician program through the union. But he has to, like, sign a five-year contract because of the apprenticeship program and how it's set up. So, and that's, I think that would be a disadvantage of the unions, because if we can bypass that five-year, where they have a little bit more, you know, where they can go and work and do things, that would be great.
And that is the advantage of an apprenticeship, is that by taking credit courses, it does reduce the amount of hands-on, on-the-job training required hours for the apprenticeship.
So staff is seeking approval by the Board of Regents to offer the new program in the new electrician program. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Dr. Adami. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bennett. Any other questions on that item? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And stay with us, Dr. Halcom, to talk about the new AAS in fitness and exercise science.
Thank you. Yeah, we already have, we currently have, that is, an Associate of Arts in Kinesiology that is fully transferable to universities. But what I'm proposing today is an Associate of Applied Science in Fitness and Exercise. That is a terminal degree. It is a workforce degree. That will allow students to enter the workforce with an associate degree. They would need to complete the AAS, but also qualify and pass a certification exam as well. Now, I have Dr. Phillips here today. She's in the back, and she's here today to assist with any questions. She's worked very hard to develop this program. Now, the AAS is proposed to begin in fall of twenty-twenty-two, upon your approval. And once again, we need your approval. And then it goes to the coordinating board, and then SACS COC. It has already been approved by our internal curriculum committee. This program will develop knowledge and skills necessary to prepare the student for a career in the fitness industry and pass the personal training certification. Now, those certifications could be the National Academy of Sports Medicine, the NASM, the American College of Sports Medicine, ACSM, the National Strength and Conditioning Association, NSCA, or the American Council on Exercise, ACE. Many other, I shouldn't say many, but several other colleges do offer this degree. Examples, Austin Community College, which is huge, Tyler Junior College, Northwest Vista, Alamo College. So in this program, what does the fitness cover? It it covers exercise science, group exercise, fitness, facility management, equipment management, all of those things that you see on this slide. And Dr. Phillips can fill you in on more if you have additional questions on that. What is the job market? About fifteen percent growth is anticipated between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-nine. Twenty-three percent state-projected annual job openings. And the salary may not be as high as electrician, but it's still pretty good. You know, it's twenty dollars, seventy cents an hour, and the annual median wage of forty-three thousand, two-hundred. What is the institutional capacity? We already have the qualified faculty. We don't need to hire another full-time faculty. We already have the available classroom space. We have five-thousand-one-hundred-square-foot fitness center with all of the equipment that is needed. You know, if the program grows, we may be hiring some adjunct faculty, but we don't anticipate a full-time faculty. But we already have things ready to go. Okay? And like I said, Dr. Phillips, who is chair of the Kinesiology and Education Department, is here if you would like some more in-depth conversation about this program. Do we have would like some more in-depth conversation about this program. Do we have any questions about the program?
It seems like you're saying it's not going to cost us anything extra to do this.
No, we have the equipment. It may cost for some adjuncts. Like, let's say, all of you decide you want to get in this program, and this enrollment increases in bursts, then yeah, we'll have to hire some adjunct faculty.
But that's only because we have so many more students
Yes.
that are paying tuition.
Exactly. Exactly.
All right.
Any other questions? Staff is recommending the board approve this program to go forward to the Coordinating Board and SAC COC. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Garza. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Adami. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say no. That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we've got Mr. Strabos up for his four items before the board, and we'll take them one at a time, starting with asbestos abatement for the music building.
Regent, it's good to be here, and we are working on your new home, getting it ready, getting quotes to make that happen. So this is Agenda Item Number Six, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Award of Invitation for Bid, IFB Number 2021-10, asbestos abatement for, this is the old music building. And so the Purchasing and Business Service Department has advertised. This is a low bid advertisement. We received six bids and recommend award to the low bidder. The bids themselves from the companies, the low bid, Camacho Demolition for $139,500. We also received bids from Prism Response for $168,212, RL Abatement Incorporated for $169,700, ARC Abatement for $204,750, Allen &amp; Company for $206,230, and American Abatement LLC for $194,587. This asbestos abatement has to occur before we can proceed with the renovation of the building itself, the funding source, the 2014 bond funds. This is on the bond funds project. We're also recommending an additional 10% contingency, which is $13,950 for a total funding of $153,450.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Strabos? Yes, Mr. Bennett?
When was that building constructed?
This particular part was like in the 1950s.
Okay.
There's been some renovations and other work, but it's one of the older buildings on the campus.
Any other questions? So staff is asking for the board to approve awarding the contract to Camacho Demolition. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Dr. Adami. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Any other questions or comments? Please note for the record that Regent Kelly had to depart. With that, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, Item Number Seven.
Item Number Seven, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Award of Request for Competitive Seal Proposals, RCSP Number 2021-13, East Campus Roof Replacements. This is another 2014 bond project. The Purchasing and Business Service Department has advertised competitively. This is a qualifications-based proposal. It's not just based on price. We had other factors that were included. We had a committee that evaluated these proposals. In this case, the recommended contractor is going to be the low bid contractor. We received four bids. The bids that we received, American Contracting USA Incorporated for $7,750,045, Haber Roofing Company for $5,984,924, Port Enterprises Limited at $5,456,516. That is the low bid. And then Rio Roofing at $6,160,000. We're recommending the award of contract to Port Enterprises Limited for $5,456,516, and the funding source of the 2014 bond programs. The roofs that will be replaced, the Aquatic Center Gymnasium Building, the Multi-Service Center Building, Maintenance Building, Richardson Performance Hall, Venders Business Building, and the Kohl's Classroom Building. This is approximately 160,000 gross square feet of roofing that will be replaced.
What's the timetable?
We want to start it. Of course, they have to order material, so it actually probably will not start until September. We're going to look for a schedule to come from the contract or a detailed schedule. This is one of those ones where they could, if they had enough materials and resources, they could work on multiple buildings at the same time. But they're probably limited by their labor crews, availability of labor and materials. It's probably going to take them a year to do more of this, and we'll have to watch the schedule as well as the weather.
You said the company is Port?
Port Enterprises Limited.
And they are out of Corpus Christi or where they are?
Yes, ma'am. They are local. Yes, ma'am.
Good. Quick question. Yes, I'm sorry. Can you describe the committee, the selection committee, whether you give names or not? Who made that?
It was made up from facilities personnel
Okay.
as well as the architects who designed the project.
Okay. Any other questions? Staff is recommending award of proposal to Port.
Port Enterprises Limited.
Enterprises Limited.
And the amount is $5,456,516.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to that effect? Some move, Dr. Adami. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Garza. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. That motion passes. In the future, it would be helpful if we had a summary sheet
Yes, ma'am.
as we go through. Either you pass it out that day or in the packet. That would be really helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item, number eight.
Thank you very much, Regents. I'm going to provide updated perspective as far as the long-range planning that the college has done that goes along with Mr. Strabos' recommendation on facilities planning and the scope of workforce facilities planning. To provide a perspective, I wanted to show the progression of facilities planning and assessment that's taken place really over the last decade. As you notice here, the last planning master plan was prepared by WKMC Architects, and the original planning actually took place in 2010-11 and culminated in the 2012 Facility Master Plan, which was a 20-year visioning for the college. And out of that master plan came the 2014 bond issue and the 2016 bond issues, which came out of a capital improvement program. Over that period of time, we also developed two different five-year strategic plans. I wanted to point out that the strategic plan from 2014-19, we also had a goal at that point in time, Goal Seven, which had to do with resources and specifically identified the assessment and continued improvement of our facilities. In the strategic plan that we're operating under now, from 2019 to '24, we have Goal Four that addresses learning environments and how we assess and continually improve our learning environments for our students. Out of those plans, we developed the 2014 Capital Improvement Plan, and this was really a program-wide that looked at facilities across primarily east and west campus and provided the funding to do the master plan for south campus. But that plan at the program at that time in 2013, if you think back when we had the 2014 bond issue, it was really looking forward, and here we are in 2021, and finalizing a lot of the work that came out of that program. During that time, we identified many other needs, however, recognized that the $157 million bond request to the community was really at the appropriate amount at that point in time. You see a lot of work that's been accomplished on west and east campus. You also see the master planning that took place on south. In addition, we had the 2016 Capital Improvement Program, and of course, that is the funding for the voter election that provided the funding for our south side campus. These plans, programs, and strategic planning that took place over this culmination of almost 11 years is where we are today. And what Mr. Strabos is proposing today is how we begin to address the plans themselves, to update a master plan, and to begin to assess a lot of the facilities that were not part of the two bond issues. When we look across the campus, one of the things that is included in the east campus is our Edge Plan. However, that doesn't look at a lot of the outside planning and learning environments for our students. And so there's additional assessment that needs to take place to bring these facilities up to plan and then to begin the next master plan. And Mr. Strabos is going to talk about that.
So we have several different tasks that are the initial task for updating the overall master plan. So the first task is just an overall assessment to review the buildings that were not included. It's about a million gross square feet that we really haven't thought of. So these are not a duplication of effort. It's totally separate buildings we haven't really done an assessment of. What we're looking for on those, splitting up into a couple of different activities, and this is just the building envelope, that when we look at our roofs, our walls, we've got a lot of issues. We need some very clear definition. And what we're asking for is for Terricon, who is one of our IDIQ consultants, you saw that list earlier tonight, earlier this afternoon, for $300,000 to perform building envelope assessments of all of our buildings that we're not looking at so far. The next part of it, then, is kind of some core, real basic master planning concepts. We're looking at activity volume. This is space utilization at its core level, that a lot of times we'll find rooms are fully booked, and we'll even go into our software, AdAstra. And then I'll have personnel actually go and look at that room, and the room is empty. No one's in there. And there's a tendency sometimes to reserve a room because we're going to need it one day, someday, for some class. And yet, so it's reserved in the system, yet it's not truly being utilized. Or it's reserved in the system for a class of 30 students, and we go by there, and it's two students in there. There have been changes once the class has started. And so it's about really doing a drill down on how we're really utilizing our space, because that helps us determine our next level of what spaces do we need. It sounds like we need spaces for electrical parts of it, even though we didn't hear that once those programs grow. If you know about the electricians, there's an incredible demand for those jobs. The next part of it, then, part of a core part of this, was a real preventive maintenance and our deferred maintenance needs from a budgeting allocation. And that comes out of a separate study that will be performed by sightlines. They have a corporate purchase contract for $175,000. So that's kind of the basics, and these are the first building steps, the first building blocks in preparing for our next master plan district-wide.
Questions from Mr. Strabos or Ms. Keith? When do you anticipate the process? You said this is going to inform your facilities master plan?
Yes.
So what is the timeframe and the parameters for a full facilities master plan?
These first steps, I'd like to think we'd have finished by December. I mean, these are, in general, local consultants, they've got staff available. I've made them aware of this. They've been, these are things we've been chasing for a while. And identifying the funding, and we are recommending 2014 bond interest income, unallocated interest income. And from the 2014 bond, the interest income earned to date is $4,283,226. We've only allocated $617,000 of that. So we have $3.6 million of unallocated interest income. And so these are consultants who are ready to go. And I think, I'd like to think by the January board meeting, we could give an update on the status of these, which then leads into our next steps.
And what are those next steps? I guess that was my.
All right. So the next step after this, and partly it's going to be almost a vision from the board, because that's a key part of the master plan. Where does the board want to go? Where's the board's vision for the growth? And part of it is what Lenore's been working on, on the outreach centers, and so how these come into play with this. And so it's a lot of different pieces, and we'll probably have to schedule like a workshop to go through that, because it's easy to say, here's what we should do, and stand up and ask for funding for that. But if that doesn't fit the vision or our overall demographics and change in the economy, and you've already heard, we're looking at spring for big changes in enrollment. So I think what we should kind of preliminary talk about, plan on, is a workshop in the spring to talk about our next steps after we have these reports.
Great. Perfect. So I'll look to you, Dr. Eskamia, to put that on our pending list along with the other workshops and figure out when that fits in.
Yeah, it may look more like a retreat, but.
Perfect. Yes, Mr.?
I do have a question. And again, I mean, I think that these, these actions are necessary in order to assess what our building capacity or student learning capacity is. But I, not in terms of what they can learn, but what we can offer in terms of space. Question, though, we've had some conversation today about the need or not need for the south side campus and whether that's going to replace some of the space that we have here on the east campus. And I've visited the west campus, and I've seen the full utilization of the space that we have out there, the great things going on over there. I think that we need to first discuss, because you were talking about maybe some students or some other population not wanting to come to the east campus and rather study over at the south campus. And so I'd like for us to figure out what it is, if our location is a detriment to us being able to fill this place with students in terms of a learning environment. I mean, do we want to spend $600,000 in order for people to assess our buildings and tell them, tell us, we're going to need to do this or that to make them usable, but at the end of the day, we're not going to choose to do that.
So what I was talking about earlier were things that we've been talking about for a very long time here. And that was that with, and that was one of, some of the first questions people asked was about the south side campus and how is it going to affect the rest of the district. And so anytime a new campus is opened, regardless of what district, it inherently pulls from other areas. But then those things level out over time is what we've been talking about in our projections and so forth. The other thing that we talked about is how this campus is not growing per se, and how we've been taking buildings offline. And the net effect was a contraction of sorts. It was a right sizing once we started looking at the utilization. So, I mean, these are, we just have to revisit those conversations. Glad to. But, I mean, these sorts of things are for existing buildings. I mean, this campus won't change. It won't change permanently. The enrollments won't, it's not like this campus is going to be, that's been rhetoric that's been used against this campus for a very long time. And it's not been, I do not agree with it. This campus will hold its own, based on our projections, based on the density of the population around here. Those things are not, are not changing. It will have a slight decrease over a period of time.
And I agree with what you're saying right now, because again, I think the people that want to study in the allied health and sciences are going to go to the west campuses the same as they went to Moody when they said nobody wanted to go to Moody, but they offered a health center over there. And so people that are coming here for specific curriculums or particular study are going to come here because it only takes 18 to 20 minutes to get anywhere in town in Corpus Christi. Again, people could say.
But it doesn't, well, I'd have to, I'll say, it takes an hour for a student to come on the bus from Flower Bluff to here. And we've been visiting those students, been working with those students for years now. So it's not, who are we talking about? If you're talking about you and me, we could get here in 15 minutes. But if you don't have a car, you're going to borrow a car, you're going to, but the net worth of those students that are, and I hate to look at it that way, but are the assets that they have, it's not the same for an 18-minute drive like you and me. And, I mean, we've been, we've been.
You know, I'd rather look at percentages of
Sure.
potential students and say, this percentage, 9%, not that they're
Sure.
not important, but you figure out how to find a solution for those eight or nine percentage of the students that don't, that have transportation issues versus us sending a direction, a different direction than we need for the other 80, 91%.
Yeah. So, I mean, I mean, we've been planning and preparing, and I think the numbers that are going to be, first of all, we have to take care of the buildings that we have, and we're working to do that. And that's what this proposal is about. And the numbers and the projections of what we said for south campus, and as it relates to what we're doing here, again, it's all based on growth over there because of what's going on over there, the rooftops that are just going crazy over there, the population base, and the opportunity of this campus being right-sized is what we're talking about. And that's, this falls in place with that. It still will hold a population of about 6,000 students, and that's currently what it holds.
At the end of the day, I'd just like for us to have a consistent conversation about what we're going to do
Sure.
going forward, coming out of this, I'm going to say, coming out of this COVID-19, or coronavirus pandemic, and then all the exercises related to team meetings and Zoom meetings and everything else, and the opportunities we had in being able to learn virtually, and what are onsite instruction. It might be the same as it was in 2018
Yeah.
or 2019. I just think that we do, we are going to have about eight or nine or 10 minutes. I don't say that I don't want to do this. I'm just suggesting.
Sure.
At some point, we need to have a conversation that's going to have us speaking the same consistently in the same terms
Yes, sir.
going forward, so that the community knows what it is that we plan to do.
Sure. Well, and it's, and going to that, the permanency is not going to be that great. It's not going to shift the curriculum to online instruction or that sort of thing. The students. The students are asking, Dr. Turner's in the, in the trenches with those students who are coming out there, and, and, I mean, we're, we're seeing it here, the students are asking for face-to-face. Face-to-face will always be the standard and, and, and primary pedagogy for, or methodology, rather, for our students. So, I understand what you're saying, and, but again, I, I mean, and I do agree with you that, that we do, we do need to have that, that, those analyses done, and so that we can all be on the same page for the community.
At the end of the day, though, we need to recognize that this is our, I would say, our core campus, our
Yes.
flagship, and we're going to have to sell that there is some value in students coming to the main campus.
Well, sure, but 47 million dollar building was a big investment, and then all these other renovations that are coming, I mean, this campus will be as nice and/or as updated as any campus anywhere. That's what this master planning opportunity is all, all about, and it'll come in the spring for us to set that vision.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Regent Garza.
Other questions or comments? All right, so staff is asking for, is recommending to us to following purchase orders to support those facility planning and assessment task awarding contracts to Terragon, facility programming and consulting, and sightlines for the amounts that are listed. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some moved.
Dr. Adami moves.
Second.
Ms. Avery seconds the motion. Are there any other comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all opposed, please say no. That motion passes, thank you very much. And then lastly, item number nine, discussion action related to an AGCM contract modification. Mr. Strabos?
You did hear a public comment about this particular item. So AGCM has been on contract for Delmar College since January 5th of 2016. They started working on the 2014 bond. Their scope of work has grown, there are separate scopes of work, it's one contract, and they've been working the 2016 bond. Their contract amount for the 2016 bond is $3,574,383 that was approved by the Board of Regents on March 9th of 2019. Since I've been here, which is a little more than a year, I've been working with them constantly, hand in hand, about their staffing, their scope of work, and their billing to, I had serious concerns when I got here and saw what they've been billing and the scope of work and what they've been doing. They have adjusted accordingly, but we're at a point on the overall project where AGCM's our boots on the ground, out on the campus, they're out there every day, and it's in my opinion that we need them in the best interest of Delmar College to continue to provide a presence through the completion of the project. The amount of work with them on is $599,643. And this, to get these projects to completion, this is only through the 2016 bond, has nothing to do with 2014 bond or any other bond, 2014 bond projects, and it's to get those projects completed. It would be funded through 2016 bond unencumbered interest income. The 2016 bond interest income to date is $3,308,000, and we've encumbered about $800,000 of that, which leaves about $2.5 million of unencumbered interest income.
Thank you, sir. What questions do we have for Mr. Strabos? Regent Bennett?
I've got some questions on this one.
Yes.
I've been trying to understand this contract for several years.
Yes, sir.
I can't find it in eBuilder, is it in eBuilder?
I will find, work with legal, we'll find you a copy of it, if you, you have access, you've been through eBuilder.
I do, I do.
Pretty sure if you couldn't find it, it may not be in eBuilder.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure of that, but I, I can't find it. And I can't find the competitive bids, because I've done a lot of research on this independently, and I'm looking at 1.5%, which is what the caller said.
Yes, sir.
And I can't understand the 4.2%. I, I simply don't understand it, that it's, it's more than 2% and almo, more than two times, and almost three times what the industry standard is. So I don't understand that.
I think part of it, I'll do more research on that, so we can provide the board more information about this. Part of that contract, just from looking at parts of the scopes of work, that while there's correlations between time and dollars, that this contract, rather than being a percentage of construction, is more about just time, and I, I think that's been one of the problems.
Every time I read an application for payment, it comes out to 4.2%.
Right, yes, sir, that's.
So it looks like it's on a percentage.
Well, the math ends up being the same, but it's about labor hours. There's a, there's a very, there's like a 10-page labor report of these, the personnel, the days, the times, the hours they worked.
There is, but every time I compute it on every different application, it's 4.2%.
Well, but it, it's changed from what it was over the past year, because before it was more than that.
Okay, well, I, I'm confused on the contract, and I'm not comfortable extending it because I'm confused on it.
Yes, sir.
I, I would like to have more information for the board before we, before we make this commitment.
Yes, sir.
That's my feeling on it.
May, may I ask John, if we, if we don't approve this, what, huh, what, what does that do to you? For this project? Because we don't meet in July.
Uh, right, that, that's okay, the advantage, we have some time, and we, we can come back in August and have a more detailed report for the board to consider, so that the advantage, why I'm trying to be ahead of this before it gets even worse, is to make you aware of this challenge and to provide the board the information they need. So we have time to provide you the information that you need and to work with AGCM, because they need to fully understand, partly better, what they're asking and why, and how to explain it in ways that you can explain, so that you can go back to your constituents, so when they call and complain, as they will, if there is any kind of extension, and we can work on contingency plans, we can develop some other plans. We have a variety of resources that are available to us to help us be sure the project is still completed.
May I ask one other, other question? Again, not being somebody who's well-versed in these matters, explain the, the strategy or the reason behind amendments, as opposed to, you know, just a, a flat contract that says this is what you'll do, it'll be this.
So all contracts are unique and different. I learned that from Augie, all right? And so at some point, what you end up with is a scope of work and a fee and how they are calculated. And this particular contract, from what I've been able to see, from the billings, from just some documents I can find, does not appear to have that kind of correlation where it's tied into the construction price. That it appears that it's more like, almost like a timing and materials type contract, because when you look at the invoice that we're receiving, here's the number of personnel, and there's concerns with that, that's what I've had from the beginning about this type of contract. And the challenge we're into now is we're too far in to advertise and award, bring someone else in, so it's about how do we just complete this as best we can for Delmar's interests and the taxpayers whose dollars are going into the south campus, but having, everything's crystal clear, that we need to be able to explain to the Board of Regents about their contract, what is their scope of work, what are their deliverables, what is Delmar College purchasing from them, and what will they deliver?
Thank you, that's helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
If, if we went ahead and, and approved this amendment, is there a way that we can write it out, like this is the last amendment, you need to be done by a certain amount of time, or you start owing us back, I mean, is, I mean?
Well, a, a different way.
But, so we don't keep paying?
No, well, clearly we wouldn't pay anymore.
I mean, we, yeah, there's, there's probably, you know, what's the probability there's going to be amendment for them asking for more money?
I'm not going to stand up here and do that.
Okay, but I'm, but you know what I mean?
No, I, I understand.
Let's go and stop them and get the job done and move on.
Well, that, that, it's partly dependent on the weather. So for example, and that's part of AGCM's issue, is that the, from the beginning when they started until completion, it's taking longer than they thought. But, so if we get hit with a hurricane or the rains keep continuing, that's going to delay things, which could raise the whole issue, but part of what happens is, we can't let them, we cannot extend them any further, they'd have to make other staffing adjustments. The other side of this is if the rains stop and we don't get a hurricane, I can guarantee you Fulton wants to get finished with that project and be paid and go on to their next contract. If they got finished early, we're not guaranteeing AGCM they'd pay this. So there could, the other side of this is that if they got done early, then AGCM's finished, and we wouldn't pay them because they'd be done. AGCM would go down the road to their next set of projects. But at this point, I've heard you loud and clear, and we need to bring back significant amount of information to the Board of Regents at the August board meeting. I do not anticipate this would be an information item, it would not be an action item, because I would expect other questions, other information would be required, and once you're fully comfortable with what we proceed, then we would know what to do from there.
They're so continual, will be working, trying to get done, so we.
That, that is why we have some time, they're out there today, they'll be out there tomorrow, that's why I can tell you that they will continue to be there, and that's why we do have time to see a very clear path forward, and so that everyone has all of the information needed to make the appropriate decisions.
One, one more question.
Yes, sir.
That original contract was written on, on the original specs, and we reduced the footprint.
Yes, sir.
And now they're wanting more money for a reduced footprint.
Yes, sir.
Bring us more information.
So there is a recommendation today, are you pulling that recommendation?
My, my recommendation, based on your comments, is this item be removed from the agenda.
All right.
Take no action.
Well, thank you for the information today, and we'll look forward to, for you bringing it back when, with more information.
Regents, we can use the, the July 27th meeting if need be.
As well. Okay, so this is tabled for, for, for discussion at another day. That's all on our regular agenda, we are going to go back, thank you very much, Mr. Strabos, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
We are going to be going back into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending legal or contemplated matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session, and under Texas Government Code 551.074A1 regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, including the appointment to fill an at-large Regency Vac, Regent vacancy, number two, annual evaluation of the college president and college president's contract, and number three, annual board self-evaluation with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 3:40 PM, and if we can quickly clear the room, we would appreciate it. We have returned from closed session at 4:57 PM with no action coming out of closed session today. Calendering, we have a special called meeting this coming Friday starting at 8:30 AM. We will have most of the board here in person, but a couple of members will be joining remotely. We will conduct the interviews for the candidates who have applied to fill the Regents-at-large vacancy. Those candidates are Mr. Orlando Salinas, Mr. John Tomes, and Dr. Linda Villarreal. And those interviews will take place in open session, and the board will go into closed session and deliberate. We anticipate naming a, an individual to fill that vacancy and swear them in that day. Our next board meeting won't be until July 27th, and so we can anticipate, I think, another fairly lengthy agenda, we'll send you some details related to that. Dr. Eskimia, is there anything else for our calendar?
Just that it's an unusual year in that July 5th will be our observance of the Fourth of July holiday, that's a Monday, and so we will be off that day.
Thank you, sir, thank you. And then you'll also be receiving information about our, just to confirm the dates and times for our August regular board meeting, as well as our August special called meeting for the budget and tax rate hearings and adoption. You'll also be receiving information about convocation, so that if you want to participate remotely, or there might be an opportunity for some of us to participate in person as well. Anything else for our calendar? If not, thank you all so much for your attendance and your energy today, really appreciate, I think we've done good work today, and enjoy your summer break. To staff and to board members, we get a little bit of a summer break here, so everybody enjoy. We are adjourned at 4:59 PM.